Lost Brandon in the basement of the building.
Carrie, we have anything to declare?
Uh, just two minutes. I just.
Are you capable at all?
Yeah.
One of your many trees. Are we live? Are we recording it live?
Recording, yes. You don't have a way to do that.
As I said, they're across the street, so.
Yeah. How you doing?
How are you? Out of my glasses, is that where you at at the right time? Is it?
Six fifteen.
Okay, top of the.
You're gonna keep your mind, but.
Yeah, I don't know the lighting, the lighting.
And I didn't even need a prescription.
Seven o'clock now.
No. Alright. Carrie, let me know when you're ready.
You're good to go.
Alright. Good evening, everybody. Titan, uh, Tom, Titan, Zoning Board of Appeals, regular public meeting, Wednesday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, seven o'clock P M. Primetime building, ten fifty-nine. Somerset Avenue, Massachusetts. This is a public meeting and being video and R recorded, particular broadcast, and this agenda is subject to revisions and additions up until the meeting time. So, uh, meeting's not officially open if we could just rise or be placed up.
I'd like to release to the United States of America to the repeller for which it stands one only mission under God, infinite hope, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, so before we go on, we're just going to first confirm the next meeting dates. Carrie, is there any reason that it's going to be other than the usual pattern that we've been following, or are we?
I don't have any reservations or anything um, for the fourth Wednesday.
Greg, showing that it should be that, you know, that calendar should be twenty-four. Um, I know that first, I think even before my dad was, you know, on the board, basically so the month of August off. Sometimes we felt like it wasn't necessary, especially if we had something coming up. If we had a year of forty B's, we might do that, but uh, does anybody have a strong need to, I mean, just, I think besides Brad, I'm
Well, what if, what if we have our continuance on the tonight with August, we?
Well, that, and that would lead to the fact, really, if, if people were sure done wanting to keep that August off, we would have to move to September, but I personally don't see a need to keep it, to keep that the month of August off, especially where, you know, like they said, we've been on the lighter side anyway, so it's not like, you know. But if, if we have a lot of people that are out on vacations, or it's gonna be hard to nail down a date. But would the twenty-fourth work for everybody?
I can't, I can't commit yet, but.
You know, you're not sure yet?
No.
Um, but, and you wouldn't be on any of the cases tonight anyway, for?
No, no, if there's anything that's tonight because of what's here.
Oh, okay.
At least for this, you know, at least one case tonight, I wouldn't be on it, it's.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, Carrie, do we have any meeting space?
I am gonna be here.
It will be here, okay. So aside from John, that worked for everybody, correct? Margaret, did that work if you're?
It would work for me.
Okay. Awesome.
Yes.
Alright, so we're going to, um, before we go on, Carrie, is there anything that we do we need to take any of these agenda items out of order, or are we good to go on, I, I just listened?
I think we can, um, I would send Mr. Hudson here right now. Um, and we haven't received anything. I would say that would be the quickest thing right now, but I don't think he has, I'm not sure.
Do you not say, he has not said either way, like what his boundary, I mean, I know what his point of, or his intention was last meeting, but I don't know if it had, if it's going along with that same mindset, or?
Um, I don't know who sent the list email that I sent him this evening. Um, he hasn't responded to that one.
Well, I took it, it sounded to, he didn't respond, but it sounded like we, you knew we wouldn't be on here, we're gonna press for our continuance. But he didn't say that particularly, but that's what it sounded like if you read all the emails.
Okay.
Well, I agree, I agree, I agree with that, because I read it.
Yeah, that's the way I kind of took it, well. The interpretation is it's still being resolved, it's still being reviewed.
You see, the stuff that was, uh, it's.
I would say that's probably the interpretation from both sides in the argument.
Yeah, so if, if that's the case, then, um, we, we, we can, yeah, we, we can wait this for, I mean, if there's no need to take out of order, but we'll just hold on, just go on to. So we'll go with the, uh, first item on the list, to review, discuss an act Owen Kelly of Stonebridge Homes for Stony Ridge Estates regarding release of the bond. John, can we have three voting members please?
Um, voting members would be yourself, Greg, I cannot be, one of those quicks, we're using. Um, uh, put yourself then, um, Alice, and Sue.
Uh, Alice. Okay, so just for the record, um, can you briefly state your reasons for, um?
Greg, Global Vice Chair, um, the prior, only before, uh, Fisher was the company I work for now. Um, back in the day, uh, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, I did not work for Blue Stone Construction, I don't know, construction company. Uh, since two thousand eighteen, as I was reading through all the decisions, I realized that name is in here, so I think I need to excuse myself.
Okay.
Jonathan Gale, I am currently one of the homeowners at Stony Ridge Estates, I am also one of the, uh, trustees for the residents of Stony Ridge Estates.
So just to the point, I mean, for you, especially for the new members, um, obvious small town, it's kind of hard to report not knowing someone or being related to a case somehow. But one thing that the, uh, state is very clear on is that it's not just a conflict of interest, it's also the bigger thing is that a appearance of a conflict of interest. So even if, in reality, you feel that you're quoting on a case or anything like that, maybe not, but if someone in the audience or some of them feels like it could be, that, and then that's enough that you should, uh, have same from voting. When they do that, they are able to continue to be, uh, actively reading and obviously listen as a member of the public input and, and act that way, so that you have some of the more concerned, they're not intimidated from speaking, but they just cannot be a voting member on, on the case. Alright, so that being said, uh, Owen, whenever you're ready, right? Uh, so Owen Kelly, Stony Ridge Estates, um, we're gonna start the process of going through release of the bond, completion of the road, completion of the comprehensive permit, not to say they'll continue after this, but completion of all the responsibilities of the developer. So, um, Margaret and I have started to go through, we put a comprehensive sales spreadsheet together of every single condition that's in the permit. I was able to meet with the building inspector last week to go through his items. Uh, Peter Williams is out of town for the summer until August ninth. Uh, when he returns, we're expecting to do an official sign-off of his items, uh, along with like our final review of the site. Uh, and then I'm providing a margaret, I have provided some of the documents for uh, other items that included like affordable housing, uh, recording info, uh, cost to completion, things like that. Um, but we expect part of the rest of it done within the next few weeks. Alright, and just from your point of, uh, your point of view, how do you feel like the process has been going, or is right now with your, uh, I might list, you feel like it's been and understanding what's outstanding, do you feel there's a lot that's been disagreed on, but how do you feel?
So that's part of why we're here today, I think that, uh, any items that are left, um, are either have a resolution proposed, or um, have been solved and just the documentation. Um, this is good to have this meeting to make sure that that's the truth. Uh, and if there's any other items, I expect that we can complete them for the next meeting, uh, ideally on the twenty-fourth of ours.
Just so the members of the public now, as I'm sure some of you are here tonight for this, whenever you're voting members, if they have any questions, and then once that's done, I will turn it over for, whether you all want to speak, or just one person wants to speak. However, you guys, so they need to do that, but just so you know, you all will have a chance to speak, as you guys know. So going down the road, I'm assume you have any questions for the app?
You know, I didn't know that, yeah.
Alright, and as a, remember the thought that I am gonna have to wait for you to. Anything? Um, alright. Margaret, whenever you're ready, do you have, you, when you have?
Has your input on this so far?
Um, so I'll, I'll just share that as I told the board before, uh, Mr. Kelly's correct that I have been working with them, um, since this request was originally filed to at least begin the comprehensive review. I have been receiving information from him, um, more recently, but we had at least worked together to put the spreadsheet on all the open conditions and sort of what was needed, um, back in May. Um, and I did receive an email, which I think you will copy it on from the building inspector, because it looks like he's also started some of that review. I am curious, um, going about whether or not, um, it looks like from the building inspector's email that there's some conditions that you're looking to request a modification on.
Mm-hmm.
So if that's the case, that, that process will need to be completed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, perhaps it makes sense to wait until you've had a full review by everyone, and then it doesn't sound like these are major modifications yet. Uh, but that's obviously a decision the board would need to make. Uh, but I'm just wondering what your timing is, because of that, what your time, your sense of timing on that would be?
So I brought copies of those modification requests here tonight, I figured this would be a great time to discuss and get the board's, uh, board's feeling, and I knew that some of the, uh, homeowners would be here as well, so they could weigh in on the subject. There are really two items that would require modification requests at this point. Uh, the first is, yeah, about the entrance sign, uh, the entrance of the subdivision. So part of the permit is that the entrance sign would be temporary. Um, it's my understanding that the homeowners would like it to be a permanent sign. Uh, to do that, we'd have to request a change in the language of permit to say the permanent entrance sign would be allowed. I have worded, uh, the language in my modification request to say uh, that a permanent subdivision sign will be allowed to be erected uh, with the name of development as long as approved by the board, uh, zoning board of appeals or its representative. I've also brought pictures of the existing sign, I'm sure most of the board is familiar, uh. Like you said, it's, this is really, um, up to the board completely. If they decide, you know, we'd like to have it removed, that's a very quick, easy thing for us to do. Uh, so I'll provide these pictures up to the board here.
So just to be clear, if you're filing the request at some point in time tonight, then that figures as being a review period, which perhaps there can be an agreement that that gets extended to any time.
And I'm happy to, I'm happy to wait.
That is something that we're able to vote on, but certainly you can submit the pictures today, I just want to be clear with what your vote.
My understanding, when we were becoming here today, uh, trying to get the release here, I think it is a very, very um, good time to talk through if there are any other outstanding concerns that I wasn't aware of. I know there are some questions that the homeowners association has, um, that I thought would be good to ask now, but again, the goal of, uh, finalizing at the next meeting. Uh, again, there's still a good amount of legwork, including Peter Williams' review when he gets back. Assuming that time works out, I still think we're, uh, it's possible to finish up the next meeting. Uh, the other modification request is that in the permit, it requests, it, it states that there shall be a five-foot mile fence around the detention basins. Uh, at the time, a four-foot fence was installed. I'm happy to replace it for a five-foot fence, but it seemed to me like the four-foot fence has been adequate, um. Again, this is up to the board and the homeowners association, uh, from what I've been told from the homeowners association, they just want to make sure it's cleared up one way or the other. Uh, if the board has input or concerns, I'm happy to take them and handle that.
Um, Greg, just more of a point of information from me, so it, this may not be, it's, it's actually discussed at this point in the process, but from what I remember hearing a long time ago when these parties were done, I remember my dad saying the concern, especially that the fire and police would have about giving, I obviously this development has a name, so I'm not saying, obviously not to name it that, but saying signs like that could lead to some kind of confusion amongst to, you know, someone across the street or down the street who's lived there, were to call in emergency, and then they just say, you know, Stony Ridge, and that I don't have a street, I'm not sure, I mean, I was taking that example, you know, very detailed, but I know that's a concern that you would have with many of these kind of developments, and does it, if that is the case, is a sign going to just only keep that, no, or is that not much of a concern?
Well, that has happened in the past, um, so we've got developments that have had signs and, uh, like you say, fire has been called, they go, they say, Stone Ridge, they go there and it's our next small apartment corner. So, um, yeah, it has happened, um, that's up to the board to make that decision on that, I don't think it's a a deal breaker.
Okay. No, that's one, he asked, it's something you were like, absolutely, not always something that.
No, no, we, we, we only came to our attention on one matter once back in the day, and then it's since then, nothing I've ever heard of, it's ever happened again, but it has happened. Um, so that's up to the board to make that call, it's not like it's a set stone, we have to tell them, sorry.
Okay, Margaret, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I, I mean, I don't disagree that, I think that was the rationale behind the condition language, um, but with a modification request, you send that to all departments, don't you? Correct. So the public safety departments would receive that, and perhaps you could ask the petitioner to make a concerted effort to get their feedback if that type of modification were to come in. Because I think it was a public safety piece, but if there is a desire on the part of the homeowners, which we'll, what would be hearing from them too on this point, to have the sign there, then it would probably be useful for the board to have all of that information presented and weighed on before you address the modification needs.
I would say if it's something that the homeowner wants, I have, I would absolutely make sure that that language was at least in there for them to, like, if homeowners didn't care the way, then I guess, you know, we, we wouldn't be discussing to begin with. But if it's something that they want, and I certainly am not opposed to, if they're, they're being one, but as long as the safety was something that was addressed, especially where it happened, any issues in the past. So I guess if that is something that ends up happening, I would want to make sure that they are not, I mean, not prioritized, but I want to make sure that that's, at least positive attention for them to focus on. Um, any more members made questions or anything before we turn over the public?
Is it the sign or the mile fence?
Uh, about, about the sign?
First.
No.
Uh, or if you have a question on either one, I would just refer to the sign, but.
What about the fence?
There are two detention basins on the site. Uh, both, as you come in, the main drive, there's one on your right, uh, that's larger and one on your left. Uh, and both of those are surrounded by, uh, cam, by a fence.
Yeah, it's for safety.
Yeah.
Then it's worth it, it's working.
Yeah. Uh, the, from my understanding, it's been doing.
Okay, uh, the public would like to speak, uh, if it's, um, just for the record, if you could state your name and your, just for the record, it doesn't matter to me, if it's one person speaking on behalf of all of you, or each one of you, or what do you guys want to do first here?
Can we start? Oh, yeah, okay. Jonathan Gale, twenty-two, Waterford Circle, Dyne, Massachusetts, I am one of the homeowners in the development, I am also one of the, uh, three trustees, so I will start, um, and then defer to others. My concerns are, are a few things at this point, first of all, um, with regard, I'll start with the retention pines, I know, Owen, you've submitted an engineering report for the retention pines, I believe. But is it my understanding there was digging going on at the retention pines, as late as yesterday or today?
Per the background? Yes, per the recommendations of that report.
So, what I'm concerned about there is that we, as, uh, in our meetings with your office, have been asking for engineering reports, which I believe are a requirement yearly during the development of the project. You told us you had engineering reports, and then recently you told us they were never done. That's a concern, because I'm concerned right now, we don't have reserves if something comes up that needs to be addressed, that hasn't been addressed. So, that's, what you were giving us was not accurate information. The second thing that I have a concern about is with regard to, well, there's no special word, but another item, for example, we have the little lecture house over in the public area. That's never been secured, it's never been taken care of properly. It's a risk to children, it's a risk to adults, there's electrical wiring in there. We've asked on multiple occasions, again, to have that taken care of, not just a padlock, but to have it redone if necessary, so that it meets all the safety standards. We've been told it would be done, not addressed. Similarly, in the playground area, there was an agreement, I believe it's also, um, in the documents, I don't know which particular one it is, um, there's supposed to be, um, tables and benches, permit that are affixed to the ground, can't be moved, picked up, thrown around. Those have never been installed. There's issues with lighting in the development, it still has to be addressed. The, and I'm, I'm giving you my shortest, but there are a lot of things that have to be addressed, we've also discussed with you the fencing. And you're right, we've talked about the difference of four feet and five feet, and the need for locks as well on those gates. Um, we've recently had reports, as you know, I believe, of kids getting into those areas and playing. So, from my perspective, it's important to have the five-foot fence. The other thing that I'm concerned about, even separately, is whether or not you or we are responsible for asking the town to have the three roadways made public. The term in there, I believe, is shall. From my perspective, that means it's the responsibility of the developer to work with us, and I assume you would, to have all three of those roadways designated as public way eventually, through the, through the, the process, which for those who aren't familiar, would be for us to have a petition, and then to take that petition, assuming we have enough signatures to the planning board, hopefully approved to the board of selectmen, and then to town meeting. And if that's approved, then those roadways become public. In order for that to happen, we need the support of the developer to start the process. And we have to have the engineering report to do that, we don't have that yet, I realize you're waiting for Peter Williams to get back. My other concern with, along with all of this is I don't know which one of the stipulations is off the top of my head, because I just can't see it, I don't remember. But I think there was something we took over. The trustees, the three of us, took over the responsibility for the day-to-day operation, if you will, of the budget, including snow removal last year at your request, or your, your company's request. But I believe, if I'm not mistaken, in order for that to technically happen, you were supposed to come in front of this board first and ask for that relief, and that never occurred. So I'll stop there, those are my shortlist to start. But I'm sure that others, um, have something they want to share as well, so I'll stop there, thank you.
Owen, do you want to address those, or do you want to hear my questions of the public first?
However, the board would like to do it, I don't know if we want to tackle these issues, you know, one at a time, discussing the fence, discussing the sign, or if we want to, uh, have everybody from the audience speak, and then we can work some after, it's really how it would work, like.
I guess, uh, I would rather the, uh, the rest of the, um, public speak first, just so we don't spend too long on other items to find out that, like, they had a follow-up question, or they had their own insight too. And I wouldn't want us to go so long on those topics that they, that we for some reason don't get around to, to listening to them, I, if they have the same exact concerns, that's fine, okay. And if it wasn't, that's fine too, uh, so.
I'm not taking notes, just for the point, excuse me.
Absolutely, absolutely. Maybe, if you want to go, we're ready.
Yeah, Sean O'Shea, homeowner at fifty-one, Waterford Circle, also one of three trustees at uh, Stony Ridge Estates. Um, just to add a little bit of other context, but prefaced by saying, I think the request to release the bond is entirely premature. Um, Jonathan mentioned, you know, the, the four-foot fence, uh, the comprehensive permit, condition sixteen clearly states a five-foot fence. Not only are kids back there playing in the retention pines, but there have been a number of examples, uh, recently, weight animals have gotten over that fence, including here being stuck back there for days. Uh, that's something that happened last month, so the homeowners would prefer that there be a five-foot fence securing both infiltration basins as stipulated in condition sixteen of the comprehensive permit decision. Uh, Jonathan mentioned the picking table sets, condition fifty-two. Uh, fifty-eight, the temporary subdivision sign, I think the homeowners, although we can survey all, are in favor of keeping the sign, um, so.
As, as you mean?
As is, yeah, no major concerns there, um, I think it's helpful. Um, I do think there's past precedent in town where there are other subdivisions, where there are signs at the front entrance.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm gonna say, uh, I'm hoping for it either way, it's more of what you guys want, it's not my input, but it was just something like, if it wasn't going to be changed, I just would want to make sure that there wasn't going to be issue with, with the fire station, but.
Sure, certainly. Um, condition sixty-five, as Jonathan mentioned, um, it clearly states that Stony Ridge Estates LLC was to seek approval from this board prior to turning over the development to the, uh, the trustees. Uh, condition eighty of the comprehensive permit decision, this is the one I think that we really need clarification on, perhaps the town attorney can weigh in. It's the legal description of the term shall. Um, clarifying who, um, who should be seeking road approval? Is it the developer, or is it the homeowners? Uh, we were told, uh, the sister division, the Pines, uh, homeowners sought approval because there was a review to the comprehensive permit, stating specifically that that development would forever remain a private development in perpetuity. Um, so that looked different, there is no such language with comprehensive permit for Stony Ridge Estates. And then it exhibited the section two of the comprehensive permit, stated that infiltration basins were to be inspected twice a year by a certified engineer, and that those reports would be forwarded to both the health department and this board, um. In the course of six-plus years, those basins were never inspected. At least there's no written documentation that those inspections took place. So as a, as a taxpayer, many of us are paying well over ten thousand dollars a year in taxes, I would ask the question, whose responsibility was it to ensure that those basins be inspected, and that those reports be submitted as stipulated in the permit that was drafted? And, you know, then finally, you know, there's six or seven conditions which the homeowners, if it wasn't coming upon us to seek approval of the roads, would need to fulfill, we would need the support of, um, Stonebridge Homes in order to do that. We've been trying for almost two years to obtain documentation from the developer since the last certificate, certificate of occupancy was issued. Or I think it might have been, you know, your home was almost two years ago.
Yeah.
Um, so for two years, both early and in writing, we'll be, we've been seeking very specific documentation, um, but had basically been delayed, um, with a number of different excuses. Um, yeah, that's, that's the, uh, addition context I wanted to add.
True. And if you, you, I'm happy with all you guys, or you, and anyone else that wants to speak?
Can I add a couple more?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, Diane Sundell, Trustee. Um, I would just like to point out, um, paragraph eighty of the comprehensive permit, it says, applicant shall seek to have the town accept the roadway, shall in legal terms is a command. Um, it's indicating that certain actions are mandatory, not commensurate, it's just permissible, but say may, not shall. Um, I also want to state that the fencing issue, the four-foot fence that they put up, not the five-foot, is actually down in some areas, and that's how the animals are getting in, so even if it were to stay as a four-foot, they would have to maintain and fix it.
Anybody else? Um, I appreciate the effort and the homework that you guys did to prepare for all of that. Very helpful for us, whether there are issues that are something that can clear up in a matter of days, or something that, you know, that was already being worked on, it's very helpful and refreshing to, to see the type of attention you guys have been giving, so thank you a lot, it, it means a lot. I'm sure for people who are half-bad, forty B's, know what that process can be like, so it's definitely helpful for us. Owen, whenever you're ready, if you want to address those first, you certainly can.
Sure, um, okay, so I think the easiest one to knock out of the way is the sign at the entrance.
Yeah.
Right, because it sounds like the homeowners and the developer are in agreement. Uh, so the question would just be the board, I guess the board doesn't need to make a decision, like, because officially, there's no modification request in front of them. I would just say, um, I'll, I'll wait to submit it until the meeting is in line with twenty days, so that way.
Or you just, you can agree to waive the twenty-day requirement.
There you go, that's all. Um, and if the board, you know, wants to discuss it, or, um. Um and if the board, you know, wants to discuss it, or um and then decide the next meeting, that would be great.
So you're gonna go to the fire department, police department, determine that the sign's gonna be okay before the next meeting for the sign?
If that's what you'd like, yeah, yeah, no problem. I wasn't sure if Carrie's messaged it around to the different boards.
I'm not sure, if you get all the Carrie, she can tell you how she'd like to do it, but uh I definitely would like to see all the boards on.
So fire department, police, and highway?
All departments, yeah.
So I think here you go, send that typically is what she said, but I think the board, the board wants to make sure, sometimes they receive a bunch of. Pieces and they don't provide the comments, because of the circumstances around this being a modification to a comprehensive permit, I think the board is going to ask you. To make an extra effort to speak to them, and if they don't submit something, then they're gonna want to hear about what efforts you made.
When we say all boards, you mean the congregation?
It's like fun, at least, that's what I'm thinking.
Fire, the police, and highway probably?
And, yeah, and Jim, um because we have a sign that we have to have a certain size.
Yeah.
I want to make sure we follow within that realm too.
I, I will say that, um I'm happy to do that, if I start to sense that there's a pushback on it. I will probably just move to take out the sign. I'll give the sign back to the homeowners, that way if they decide in the future to seek it. Uh but I, I, I think one of the key points that was brought up, not the general topics, was the goal of um getting the road accepted. Uh so obviously, like you said, they've been reaching out to me a lot to make sure the road's been accepted. Uh there's a lot of emails from me to different town boards and, and members, trying to pursue that, that front. Uh. Obviously, the first step in getting the road accepted by the town is confirming that the road is complete, and that's part of the bond release process. So there's no way to accept the road without the bond being released. Hence why we're in this conversation to say, has the developer fulfilled their obligations? Yes, the bond gets released, and then we can go to road acceptance. Um so, uh that. My goal isn't to grab the small amount of money that's left in the bond piece. It is to start the process that we've been discussing with the homeowners for a long time. Uh but that's, I, I, am I correct, Marguerite, that that order? Like the.
So I mean, that order process needs to happen, I haven't looked at the condition language, it, it is possible that your involvement may be different than the standard.
Yeah.
Process that might happen because of that condition language, I haven't taken a look at condition eighty in a long time, so.
I do know with the Pines, that when the uh request was made to the planning board. For the release of the roads for the Pines, the bond was held until the road was being fully completed. And the report had been issued.
Yeah.
And then it was still held for one year.
Those, the one-year process is part of the town of Daken, um but except, it, it's still before. There can be a road acceptance before the planning board is going to say, yes, we were willing to entertain accepting this road. There needs to be some designation from the zoning board that the road is complete.
So, so the process, as I understand it, to go through acceptance of a road is that you start with planning board. Review and approval, and then there would be a public hearing on that, potentially the board of selectmen, also as road commissioners will need to have a public hearing, and it actually ultimately is accepted with town meeting. Um but to do that, you are correct, that there needs to be confirmation if the road is complete. And the, what's before the zoning board right now, that has been already in here since project's final build-out, so now they're asking for a release of the bond. Um. However, if the developer maintains an obligation to be involved, and I can take a look at that for the next meeting, but if the developer maintains an obligation to be involved in. The road acceptance piece, then there probably will need to be some sort of conditional release of the bond. That it would be released upon acceptance, or some agreement with everybody about what it is you're going to need that you're waiting on. Because I, I hear that you are missing documents, you haven't told me what those documents are. I don't know if that's something the board needs to hear about, or if that's something you and the developer can work out, and you want to just submit as a letter to the board, so they know what's missing.
Yeah, I could just in thirty seconds summarize specifically what's been asked of the homeowners. Written sign-off from the town consulting engineer, written sign-off from the highway superintendent. Written sign-off from the water department. Road acceptance plan, miler and four deeper prints reviewed and approved by the town consulting engineer. Legal description meets and bounds. The draft deed. At number seven was the homeowners association, copies of recorded resignation of trustees, and appointment of trustees, which we do have that. But the first six items we do not have.
So if you have that somewhere, that you can submit that into the record for the zoning board?
Yeah.
Then that would be helpful for the board as they structure some type of conditional release, bonds, et cetera, and if that's really what's needed. And the developer's responsibility turns out to be providing those pieces, which some of it's being done, consulting engineer sign-off, the highway superintendent. Sign-off is definitely already being worked on, the water department's a separate entity. From this town, so they'll need to do that on their own separately, but some of that's already in the process of being done right now through what's before the board at the moment. Um but that's, that's sub-specification, if you can identify what's, what you have completed, what still needs to be done. I think that'll be helpful for this board to have as it makes its final decision about the request before it. And I, regardless of whether it's the homeowner's responsibility ultimately, or the. Developer's responsibility, there's no question in my mind, the developer needs to be involved in this process, because you have access to information that the homeowners don't, so. Just from a strictly, you know, practical standpoint, the developer will need to be involved, from the concern that you have that. If this, if he gets the release of the bond and he goes away and we can't reach him, which I cannot, I am hearing that concern from. But the comments were, that's where there might be a way to structure some type of. Conditional approval, so that there's at least a tangible way to keep the developer involved. Perhaps some of that information can be submitted through this process, so this process doesn't end tonight, it will be ongoing.
So I don't know the best way to discuss the, I think they referenced an article. We can go to it now, article eighty. I don't know if the best plan is for. Marguerite, for you to review that and issue a determination as town council, what the town stands on it is. Um on a practical note. Um. Stonebridge Estates, it's not guaranteed that it's gonna be a accepted road, right? It has to go through, very clearly in the permit, so it has to go through the planning board process. And has to go through town meeting, and then the town will choose to accept it or not. Now, from my understanding of that process in general, that means that the town could decide not to accept it for the next twenty years. I have not heard of any uh comprehensive permit that has held a bond. Because the town has decided not to accept the road. So it's not, this, that's just on a practical, what I'm, you know, practical view of the question. Again, there's, there's a legal question, uh I, I'm pretty personally very confident how clear it is. That the statement is trying to say, when um the road goes for acceptance, it needs to go through the planning board process, that seems to be what that article describes. But, uh Marguerite, which, which way would we like to clarify that question? Have you looked at that article at all?
I haven't until tonight when I was raised, so, no, I mean, I think that it's really a matter of. Is this really an issue, or is this just something that you can work together on, because you're correct, that there's, it's up to town meeting ultimately to accept roadways in public way. That this comprehensive permit was anticipating that, and so they had provisions in it about what happens if the roadway remains private. However, there was also potentially through condition eighty, an expectation that. This developer would be more involved than they might in a standard subdivision with regards to the roadway acceptance process.
And, and we definitely are, um so we already have developed the road acceptance plan. And we already have a lawyer who's drawing up a, a deed, but I, I've told this to Sean in the past, that we are doing those two items. There was questions about how long that was taking, frustrations, and to which I said, if you'd like it to go faster. You know, you're welcome to pursue it in other ways.
Yeah, frustration is a result of homeowners paying twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a year for snow removal. I think with no, with no prorated tax, no, no tax relief. And reasonable expectation is that within eighteen months or less than two years, the information that was requested in writing. In my opinion, should have been submit, you know, submitted, but to be told that the town is not. Uh very forthcoming with information, not returning emails, not returning phone calls, I find difficult to believe. So that's where my frustration came from, it's a result of homeowners paying a, a significant amount for snow removal. And wanting to move the process along, so that we can petition the town to accept the roads, eliminating that large expense of homeowners.
The timeframe that we're up against right now, and I, Owen, I don't think it's a question of whether or not us as homeowners. Will work with you to get this done as explicitly as possible, you know we will.
Sure.
If we have to get signatures, which are required, because we all have the information, what we need, we have the verbiage, we have all the. What we need is this, the, the, the report. And the documentation that Sean indicated in the format that he's indicated.
Well.
So we can put that together, and we can walk around, and we can get our signatures, which is what we have to do, I believe it's a hundred and fifty signatures or something like that, I forget the number exactly. Of residents in, in the town, not just in, in the development. And then we have to come back to uh Carrie Easterday, who is planning secretary. And then we have to get it on the planning agenda, if we don't get it on the planning agenda. I'm assuming, and Carrie can correct me if I'm wrong. By mid-September, potentially, and even that's pushing it. We're not gonna make it onto the town, special town meeting, which is probably gonna be the first week, Monday in November. Which means if we don't make it then, and get a, potentially get an approval. Then as a residence. Again, we're using our budget for the next winter. And that affects everything else we do, it affects our reserves, it affects any capital expenses or improvements or changes we might need to make. It affects our landscaping, so there's huge implication. To having to not go another year, with potentially not having the town.
Absolutely.
So, but we want to work with you.
Wow.
You know, we, I agree with Sean, we've been asking for almost two years. And there's always a reason why it's not happening, I know the town engineer is semi-retired, I get that. So he's on a different schedule than the rest of us perhaps, but if you have this material for August twenty-fourth. If that's when we're done, and the members here do whatever they need to do, and it's approved, then we can move forward, but we need you guys to work with us.
Correct, so, so you don't just need, and this is what I've been trying to, to share. Is you don't just need those three sign-offs, but those are important. To get those sign-offs from the town engineer, we, and, and we have to complete the whole permit process. So, with the fencing, right, we have to get the fence.
The owners, it's been two years, we've been asking for this, none of this isn't being raised at this meeting. I have documentation from about two years in writing that were requested relief of these items. So. We, Diane and I walked with you eighteen months ago, and received a verbal commitment after a walkthrough, very little of which has been fulfilled.
So, so, so to be clear, like, one example that there's a little bit of confusion on my end, because we talked at that time, Bishop was there with me as well. The fencing, what I was told by the homeowners association at that time is, we are concerned there's a conflict between a basin fencing. And uh what is on the permit. I didn't get an indication, just like the sign, there's a conflict. I did not get an indication from the homeowners that we would like the five-foot fence.
Yeah.
I was under the impression, we would like, we, we at that time said, we're gonna go for a modification of the fence. So this is actually new information to me now, this is.
But it's not new that it was knocked down, and that you were gonna fix those other side of the tree, was my mind.
No, but what I'm saying is that, for right now, between now and August twenty-fourth, okay? When I started the meeting, I said that I am confident we can get there by August twenty-fourth. Under the impression that we weren't gonna be changing the fencing, I'm happy to do it, there's no, like I said, I started the conversation with. If the board wants to change the fencing, I can do it. However, where supply chains are, there, it's, that won't get done by August twenty-fourth. Now maybe, there's some kind of conditional approval that the board will be able to give that says, hey. Uh, you know, we're signing off to the level that the, the homeowners can move forward. Uh, you know, assuming that that fence is gonna be replaced, I don't, I don't know, but that's one, that's the only item that I could see.
If you were, if you were going to seek a modification, wouldn't you have done that a year and a half ago prior to seeking release of the bond? But why is that even a question now?
Because the information is, you, this is the new information, that the homeowners would like the five-foot fence, I, just like the sign at the entrance. If the, if, if you guys can, if you'd like to come in here and say, we like the sign, we'd like to keep it, the board is here to listen to your concerns. You're bringing now the concern of the fence, absolutely, they're not gonna change the requirement of that. Uh so, so the reason is, is because this is the first time I'm hearing that you'd like to change the fence, and I'm happy to. Uh but, but that will take longer.
Can I ask a question, why, if it was in the permit as a five-foot fence, why was a four-foot fence even put in?
I, I don't know, it was like five, six years ago, um but again, yes, I could have absolutely taken care of it the last two years, but all of our conversations revolved around. We want you to go get a modification so that we don't have the, the burden of, at some point, it coming back to bite us, which I said.
And if you had, if you had done that eighteen months ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I think more recently, we've had animals, large animals back there, that, that get back there and can't get out.
But that sounds like a good reason that, it's actually good that you waited, because.
I think the general frustration must be mentally you in your office, Bishop, a couple of times. And physically, you know, in, in Easton. And each time we met. Your office, not specifically you, have committed to the things that you're going to do, we'll have them done in short term, we'll have them done in short term. We're not seeing any of that result at this moment.
So I can't go back, I can't.
I know you can't go back.
No, I can't, I can't change the fact of how long it's taken to get to here, I can't. And I, and I, and I do not feel like having a he said, she said, who took what time and things like that, it gets us nowhere. We're here now with all of these lists, I mean, this is why we're here in the room discussing what items need to get. I would love, I mean, one of our, one of the, the, the people who works out of office, is part of the subdivision, is just as interested. In making sure that this gets on the docket for the town as quickly as possible. I guarantee you, we're talking about it regularly, about how do we get this done quickly, okay? We're here now, we have the list, that's why we want to get everything out here with the goal of trying to get this done on August twenty-fourth.
So if we, if we cut to the chase.
Yeah.
As, speaking as, as a resident and as a trustee. You heard that some of the lists that we brought out already, we may have other things on that list. Can you go through with us now? And yet, you can't put an exact timeline, can you say, look, we'll have this done in six weeks, three weeks, eight weeks? Knowing that we may need a small change, can you do that with us now?
So, so again, I'm going through the comprehensive permit conditions. Okay, um so we're talking about keeping the sign, or not keeping the sign. Talking about the fence. Marguerite and I are going through the other conditions that involve documentation from mass housing, or reporting information and things like that. Like I said before, I don't expect any problem getting that documentation of her. With time to review before the next meeting, but you know, I'm saying that here. Out loud, the building inspector has already reviewed his items on the list. Uh there were two, all of his items, requested items, they would like an additional stop sign at the front, because the trees block one. We're happy to do, um, there's a couple of small, I have no problem getting before the August twenty-fourth meeting. Peter Williams, we received the list from him. About, at least a year ago now, right around August, these are the items remaining. We've tackled those items to the point that, when he comes back, I'm expecting him to do a review. And sign off on, so any items that Marguerite has on there, as well as his own punch list. Um so, but, but I'm saying that I, there's no way to get a, a chain link fence done between now and the twenty-fourth.
And the other smaller items, the electrical box, for example.
So the electrical box is something that, again, it's not a comprehensive permit item. When we installed that, we had it inspected by the town inspector, and by the um. The electric company's inspector, at this point, that would be a homeowners association uh expense. You know, I've said in the past that I'm willing to go beyond my roles. But it's good to be here talking about all the items that are out there, because then I know, okay, what am I expected to do beyond the comprehensive permit? But when it was installed, it was installed, correct?
I guess whether it's our responsibility or not determines whether it's determined that we, we were asked to take over responsibility prematurely or not.
No, so that, that, either way, so all that's. I think this is another conversation, and this one, again, is, I don't know if the board is gonna be involved in this or not. Um. There's some language in the permit about the developer managing the subdivision. I think some of the homeowners have interpreted that to mean that the developer should be paying for the cost. Of snowplow, uh should be responsible for all the costs of snowplow landscaping when they are managing. To me, those are two different things, there's the managing, and then there's the paying for. Um I, I. I'm not sure. Yeah.
All right, Owen, I got a couple of questions I think can help out a lot of this here. So, when, when was the, the last certificate of occupancy for that project released?
December. Let's see. Twenty twenty, maybe twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Yes.
And we're here now, two thousand twenty-two. And homeowners association has asked you for certain documentation. I can understand some of it, Owen, it's not available because we're down Peter Williams. But like this particular piece of mouth back engineering that was in there, it's been there since June twenty-seven. Why couldn't we give them that? And just show them that it's some type of withdrawal, because they've been working with an engine, because they don't even have that. I remember in the conversation when the whole permit was being allocated, and you said, I didn't want to put the, the tables or the chairs out into that sitting area. Until the final completion, because it was people worried about vandalism. So that's going to be taken care of. The tables or chairs that were going on the seating area.
To be clear, there are benches in the seating area. The home. The, the expectation was that, now, the expectation was that was complete. Now, if, if there's a question about tables being added.
How many do they put in there? Because it was listed.
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know. I don't think the permit.
Well, I was involved, I want to say there was six.
There's definitely at least six.
Okay, that's all I care about. I remember six.
That's right, benches.
Yeah, that's right. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the electrical part. So the electrical part that you guys are talking about, right now, this particular piece of property, if I'm not mistaken, is still in. You all see a view, correct?
I believe it's under the association at this point.
So how did we turn it?
Like I did, just interject, I think that needs to be clarified, because this.
Well, that's where, that's where I'm getting a little confused here, because the written sign-offs that you require and handle it to the. To the resignation of you as the trustee to give it to the board, and does not have to all be finalized before it gets there? And that's a hazard. Some of it hasn't, like the electrical, um, you're saying, so I don't, I haven't seen this particular electrical box, but it sounds like it's a hazard.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you know it's a hazard, and, okay, you know it's a hazard. And, uh, but it was inspected by the, and National Grid, whoever did this particular thing. And they brought it to your attention, so, so he said, she said, but at the end of the day, if somebody gets hurt, who's responsible at that point?
The association.
Association, okay, so that's what you said. I don't see how it can be the association, because we haven't signed off that property to the association legally, have we? I mean, what?
I don't recall any.
It's just between you and the association. It's not about what the town is concerned. The town, as far as the town sees, that you still have the rights to this piece of property to hand it over to them as a finalization.
So if I went there and I put like barricades up around the park, that would be, except like something that I could do.
I haven't seen what's going, I'm going to take, I'm definitely going to take a ride out there and see what's going on with that. Whether it'll be analyzed, I don't know. I don't even know what it is, but I'm going to look for that.
I believe.
Town consultant, I understand that Peter Williams is going to come back, but there, so everything that this gentleman stated I had listed here, he pretty much asked for the same stuff, so that's okay. Um, so, what I'm getting at is, I don't want to fall, it's pretense anybody in this audience here, but. Even if we give it, he gets everything taken care of, it's up to the town. To determine whether the road will be accepted. Doesn't mean it's going to be. I want everybody to know that. Um, I am hoping that, uh. I know Bishop does a great development, and I seen how it went through, it was really nice. We've had some other ones we won't talk about that hasn't, hasn't been as good. But I really think if you really work hard. August ninth, we can tag it down.
Peter Williams.
Peter Williams, I'm saying it's going to happen August ninth, but we only got a few days to get to the next level. So they're asking for some information that we have, that I really think the association should be able to have. Uh, I shouldn't be the problem right here, and I'll repeat to the product engineering, get them for.
No, I brought copies.
The study of the, uh, there was a couple of things I saw, and they wanted to do away from, uh. Doing it once a year or once every two years in lieu of two. Uh, and the rule of doing it every year. Honestly, I think, uh, um, the development's fairly new. I think it should be inspected every year for a while, and it's up to the association to change that on their own later. Or they have to come in front of us and do something, and that matters a lot. It's all new. Um, so it's going to work financially, and obviously you have a concern that there was a backlog out there.
Yeah, this is from the engineer, this is, this is not, this is from the engineer, not from us.
Correct. Right, so you were doing what the engineer requested. Exactly, but I think those questions that these guys could have been answered. By just saying, yeah, we have that, you should have sent it to the association. My biggest concern is this. When did you resign, resign as the trustee and appoint these as trustees? Why did that happen already?
I don't know the exact date.
Because since summer two thousand twenty, it's two years now. I just don't understand why it's taken two years to get here. I know they had Colbert and they had some things going on, but. There's a lot of things here that, uh, it just looks like housekeeping.
I'm happy to compile a list of communications, um.
So before the next meeting, Owen, you'll be able to get as much information out of this, except for what Peter Williams would have to do to. It's quote unquote, association. Any of these documents that we have listed on here?
Well.
Minus what the, what you were still waiting with Peter Williams.
Which document?
So they were requesting for the road acceptance, and my last, you said you're working on that stuff right now, Peter Williams got to do his finalization.
Yeah, but to be, to be clear, like, I can't get a, a, a highway department sign-off until.
I understand, that's why I'm saying, yeah, we're telling them, yeah, we'll get it August twenty-sixth. I don't see that.
But am I correct in understanding, if I'm wrong, I, I'd be happy. Am I correct in understanding that? They cannot see road acceptance until the zoning board deems the road complete? Is that, is that?
Road was planned, but that goes to zoning, right?
Oh, I think, no, the zoning board is, because you're the overseer of this comprehensive permit. But I don't know the, like, if the planning board is willing to begin their public hearing process while you're working on this, and that's really up to the planning board. They may not be willing to take. Does matter to the board.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I've never had a planning board who's been willing to accept the road before the road was considered complete.
They can't accept the road. Planning board has no authority to accept the road.
Sorry, sorry, start the process to accept the road, put it on the town meeting agenda.
I suspect the planning board would at least want the highway superintendent sign-off, the.
Water.
Water department sign-off, which I think is something I still also asked for approval of. And the consulting engineer's sign-off. So we'll at least need that piece of it. Perhaps something like the modification on the fence might be something they'd be willing to. Begin their process of approval, but again, this is a very short window of what the goal here is, is to try to get approval for a special town meeting before the end of the calendar year. I mean, I still had open pieces that I haven't seen, and I'm hearing tonight. That there wasn't an annual or bi-annual inspection by the engineers, I still don't know what the status is, and this has been a question I've asked you all along, around the reserve account. For some of these basins as well. So if that account hasn't been funded. And needs to be funded, I mean, there's, this zoning board retains the ability to hold the applicant petition or responsible for compliance or lack of compliance with conditions. If there's things that you're asking the zoning board to do and you haven't met compliance with conditions. Board has the authority to impose further obligations on the applicants. Regardless of whether or not you're responsible ultimately for accepting of. For, for pursuing the roadway acceptance. If there are things that haven't been done, and throughout this process, the zoning board is not going to look to the trustees yet, they're going to look to you.
Of course.
To get that done. Um, if there's a safety issue out there, I think that. My suggestion would be that. We're better off fixing that safety issue, rather than arguing over who's responsible for it at this stage. That would just be. My suggestion, because the zoning board's hearing about it. They don't need to hear about it.
Well, where is the talks on the proper, it's an investment preparation area. Um, there's a termination for Dr. Cole, and there's an irrigation control on there as well, for the, uh, this process.
I think, I think. So it's not primaries.
I'm sorry.
It's not primaries.
Um.
Right.
It's a second. Yeah, no, it's not, it's not a transformer or a primary.
I think just, just for clarification, um. The three of us who are the trustees, I believe, um, I don't know, Diane, maybe you can address whether or not we have anything in reserve. For, um, retention plus and so forth. But we were asked, and when we were told, I think it was last, I'm going to go back to April to twenty twenty-one. When the developer at that point said it was time for, sent out an email to all the residents, saying it was time to turn it over to the HOA. Uh, they asked for recommendations of, you know, people who wanted to potentially see, being the three members, the trustees. Um, the three of us acknowledged we were interested. There were ballots sent out, uh, the email again, the three of us were elected. Uh, we had our first meeting. June of twenty twenty-one, in accordance with what we were told, the bylaws were for the first Tuesday of June, I believe it was. Um, in my backyard, actually. And at that point, the process was begun also to turn over all of the, uh, bookkeeping records, all of the billing records and so forth, so that we have been responsible for. Billing in fact for the residents for the past couple of cycles. So Greg, I don't know if it answers your question.
Yeah, just, uh, is that normal, Marguerite, for the association to be running and up and running before? The bond and all the release of all the engineering and all that stuff done beforehand?
It's not atypical. Uh, there may be a condition that requires the zoning board to approve of that process. I haven't, again, I haven't looked at. At that particular one that was brought to my attention tonight. Uh, so if that zoning board approval hasn't happened, then. Again, that's something this board can take into consideration about things that should have been done that haven't been done, and how do you want to address that? So. Uh, I don't know. Uh, it's not atypical though for. The homeowners association, once there's been, and I think that may even be in the association documents, at a certain point in time. When a certain percentage of the project has been built. Then generally it's handed, the responsibility for the homeowners association is handed over to the homeowners rather than the developer. Um, partly because you want the homeowners to be. Involved now. There's a chance the developer could walk away too, you don't want that, you know, leaving the remaining houses unbuilt either, so you want to be involved in this. Uh, whether or not there was some missed condition, uh, missed requirements here. Uh, then, if that's the case. Then the zoning board has some authority over the developer for that. Um, your authority, you know, if the developer wasn't here and you couldn't reach the developer, which is in the case here, your authority is to work within the bounds of the remaining bond that you're holding. Here you have the developer here. So, hope is that through this conversation, this process, there's. Discussion, there's work that needs to be done, some actual work out in the development that's going to need to get done. Which we've known about all along. I think, I see it similar to the way Greg described it as housekeeping items. Punch list items at this stage. I don't see them as primary. Pieces of work, but there's definitely still things that need to be done. I am not positive that I. Hit that type of a turnaround. I don't know how fast your planning board works. To get to a special town meeting for a roadway acceptance request. It's feasible here, realistically. Um, but perhaps there's some other way that there could be an agreement reached, so that I think the underlying concern is the cost of snow plowing over the next winter.
That's what I was going to say, is that I would. Really hate to see that have to happen, that they have to go through another winter, I can pay for the zoning again.
And I understand that, but I also would not encourage his boards to feel that it's, needs to agree to. Not look at getting certain things done.
No, I wouldn't encourage anything, no.
Because of that piece, in that maybe you might be able to encourage the developer to work with homeowners association to come up with a solution on that expense.
That's what might, not a much.
That might offset the zoning board's. Insistence that certain things that hadn't been done get done. For instance, and bi-annual inspections of that. Um, intent, detention basin seems silly to do now that you have the report that you have. But there was cost that was, would have been incurred associated with any of those inspections done. That wasn't incurred by you.
Yeah, there was six, six years of cost avoidance, uh, by not having a certified engineer inspect them. Twice a year. I don't know what that cost is.
Yeah, to, to be clear, you know, we have had the engineers on site, like, much more.
Right, right.
No, and so, and so, yeah, I'm absolutely willing to, to represent for the, the writing of the records of those reports. I think it's very key that the reports we have now show that both the basins, just as they have been, are in good working order. I think that's the key thing here.
With some maintenance that's needed, so there'll need to be another follow-up inspection once the maintenance is completed. I am glad to hear that there's actually work being done on those basins right now, because this was only recently. Provided, and if you take into account the July fourth holiday week, um. I think this is a fairly quick turnaround now that the report's finished.
Well, I think it has to do with the timing of the meeting and request to seek release of bond.
Well, if that's what needs to happen and we keep them on a monthly cycle and agenda, then that's something that the board can.
Then homeowners aren't naive enough to believe that we're going to be positioned to seek approval of the loan to the fault. I don't think road acceptance approvals are typically done during a November meeting. So, we're up against that. Um, this has been a two-year process. I don't expect in the next thirty days. For this information to materialize. So yet again, the homeowners will spend ten to fifteen thousand dollars for snow removal. Due to the failure of the developer. Add that to the ten, twelve thousand spent last year.
What kind of, how does the zoning board go about putting any kind of language down? How would that? Offset any kind of way by the developers, like the way you mentioned it?
I mean, it's really going to depend on what's being asked of the developer, uh, or of the zoning board right now. And how you can go about doing that. You may decide that there's, you know, you've got to focus on the conditions that weren't complied with. And we're trying to understand what those are. I think there's definitely an issue with needing the inspection requirements for the basins. There may be an issue with having reserve account, providing documentation on that. I don't know, Owen, you've told me it exists, haven't seen it yet, so.
Right.
There may be some other pieces where the, you know, developer didn't get zoning board approval, it's turnover. Uh, responsibility of the homeowners association to the trustees, but again, I haven't looked at all that. And one of the, not, it's not just the conditional language, I need to look at the homeowners association trust.
To, to be clear.
And to figure that out.
To be clear, and from the middle I came in here, um. I have, I have been very adamant in saying that we plan to do any responsibility we've signed up for since the beginning. I understand that reports weren't issued the past couple of years, but like I said, inspectors have been on site very regularly, and we have. A, a, a statement of good standing now for those systems. Uh, I said right when I got here, if the board would like a five-foot final fence, I'm more than welcome to put in a five-foot final fence. It goes, it just goes across the board for anything that, that we're due on doing.
I have to listen to everything that I see here. I really think that you should go ahead and do the five-foot fence, because it sounds like.
Yes, that's what it sounds like, yeah.
Just to get that off the record.
Absolutely.
If you can produce the records that they're asking for the next meeting, honestly, and, and, I, I don't think you would not walk away from the job. I know you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm just stating this, this, I can feel their frustration, there's been no communication. I really think if you can get as much information to them, it would take a little left off their plate, as well as. Um, there's a few things, Jimmy's working on some of these conditions that, uh, that were asked. How many of those did he look at? Did he tell you?
He sent an email to the board.
Yeah, yeah, it was about thirteen conditions that he looked at.
Yes, a lot of reviews per view. Okay.
It's only, because the email so far is only addressed to this town.
The first page where you, you, you broke, you broke down more.
It's more involved.
Incredible. At a certain point, you're familiar, so you said, yes, they would have access to where, wherever we have it all, right? So.
Yeah, I, I agree.
If, if we happen to have anything that they are looking for, and you just ask Carrie, where, where we have it, can I send that you feel like we may have? Just ask Carrie to give you everything.
Yeah.
They're a little bit impacted like you wanted to, but it's, you know, you're looking for it, and you think the chances that she hasn't, I mean, they created it the whole time, but you guys sort of go for your example.
I got it, sorry.
Mister, Mister Chairman, if I could, if I could ask, um. Again, as a member of the public, first of all, do we know, what is the amount of the bond currently being held still? I know it's gone down at some point.
I don't know.
Is it? I don't know, it's a hundred, two thousand or.
Hundred and six thousand.
A hundred and sixty, that's what he said, that's for work.
Something, something like that. Right, so, my question with regard to bond is, going back a little bit to the conversation I was hearing a few minutes ago, especially with regard to. The acceptance of the roads, not knowing if the road will, no guarantee, as, as, as Greg said. Um, but potentially going through the winter. Are we, Marguerite, allowed to, um, when I say we, the town, the public, or the board, or whoever? Allowed to potentially, um, petitioned any of that bond? Used for any of the snow relief, if, if the developer was in agreement with it?
I mean, if there was.
What's the stipulations of what it can?
Carrie's saying about.
If there was an agreement for the developer to take some of that money and apply it first. Not now, but once it was released.
Right.
Apply it, so that you would release back to the developer. Hundred thousand dollars, and the six thousand dollars goes to the trust homeowners association. That would have to be by agreement, but there is no.
But does that do that?
That does, this bond is to ensure that there's compliance with the zoning board conditions, not to ensure that snow removal is paid for going forward.
But if, if, if there was an agreement of stipulation or agreement with that between the developer and the trustees or the association. Does that have to be approved by the zoning board as part of the release of the bond?
You can have a private agreement with the developer anyway that you, in any way, shape or form that you want, but the zoning board. But the zoning board has authority with that bond and holding that bond to ensure compliance with the conditions of the comprehensive permit.
Okay. Thank you. Is it fair to say that no one actively monitors the conditions of any comprehensive permit?
I mean, the building inspector is a zoning enforcement agent for the town, so he has an obligation to ensure that zoning zoning bylaws are being implemented. That the comprehensive permit conditions for anything that's happening is being are being complied with. But typically what happens is somebody will bring that to their attention. I mean, it's one person from an entire community.
That's fair.
Usually if someone brings it to their attention, just like tonight, if it's being brought to the zoning board's attention that there is a compliance concern with some of these conditions. Then the zoning board would, if they weren't, if he's already here, would invite him in and say, we understand this compliance concern, we want this rectified. How do you plan on rectifying it? Whether it's by virtue of a modification request. Or and then they vote on that or some other agreement that gets reached or a further condition that gets imposed or something like that. It's not uncommon that what, it's a large permit. There's going to be times that things get overlooked. It might be a time that a four foot fence instead of a five foot fence gets constructed. I mean, I don't want to say that this is, this is unheard of. I just think that, you know, when you're getting down to where we're at right now, which is where they're looking for final sign off and approval. That's when you really go back through and you thought every eye and cross every team and you say things like, hey, I know you might have these as-built plans built, but I don't think they've ever actually been submitted. So that the right entities have a copy of it. You might have this reserve account in place, but we actually haven't seen those reports. So that's kind of where we're at right now. But you're then learning what it is that might still be missing. You may have some ability to have a conversation with the developer about addressing some of the things that might be outside of the comments.
The one thing that you have to note too is that. You, I'm not saying to intend to do this, you do not have to wait for them to come to us for you guys to bring up something. If you notice anything or have any concerns, you wouldn't need to fill out an application, but during the public input section, if you have anything concerned that you want to, you know, Carrie and say, hey, we want to come for the board and ask them a question, you can do that whenever. So if you ever have a concern, you don't have to like wait for it. You can see on the agenda to go, oh, let's go then. So is there any, going forward, is there any concern about any items on the common permit you feel aren't being addressed or need to be addressed? You can do that whenever you guys feel that you need that you want to do that, just you guys know.
Yeah, I I do feel like I read yesterday specifically asking April fourteenth of this board to review condition thirty six, sixty five and eight. I think the town attorney was on this email as well as this board. Those are some of the things that we're talking about today. So not, not the first time.
So I I understand that. I think that asking to review, having legal counsel review something by members of the public is different than just bringing up saying, what what would probably make the most sense is if there's something that's not being complied with. And it's not subject to a legal interpretation. For instance, there's a fence that's not built to the right standard. And I identifying that and saying, we'd like to have this fixed and repaired. People are still going to encourage you to go to the developer and try to work it out because ultimately we have to go to the developer.
Yeah, and it it's really the three major conditions that this board was asked about back on April fourteenth. Not the ticket tax stuff, not the technical tables of the sign or even the fence, to be honest with you. It was clarification on condition eighty, which.
Which is more.
And transfer of ownership.
Right, so that's more of an issue, a legal question that is now properly important for it because of the fact that you've got the developer who are asking for something. There's a question being raised by to you about whether or not they've actually complied with it. He's saying that he has, if you don't believe that that's true, that I have the ability now research whether or not it's been complied.
If you're game, definitely.
And if I could just ask, if the developer failed to follow condition, condition sixty five, is there any recourse or relief that the homeowners have? So if the development was turned over to the homeowners for maintenance of the common areas and stuff, et cetera. And that was not approved or done properly, in which there's no indication that it was. Is there any relief that the homeowners association can seek?
Right, would they resign as trustees at that time and then appoint us as trustees? Would that be like the step if it's determined they're not supposed to be trustees until? The road, the the road, the comprehensive fence is complete? Does that, is?
Well, I think that there's a lot of different options that could be out there. I mean, if he hasn't, if hasn't been complied with, then perhaps there's, it's really up to the question of what do the trustees want to do? You know, there's a way when somebody has been complied with, you can go back and just say, we're going to make everything non-avoidant that's happened and reliant upon it, but that may not make sense. So it might make more sense that there's just an agreement about how are we going to address this moving forward. And, you know.
I think that would.
There may be a joint, some sort of joint responsibility that's imposed or or agreed to or adhered to around that. And a way to to provide some security to make sure that that direct responsibility is maintained.
And I think that's.
That would be my better advice here. I I don't know that it makes sense to undo the operation of the trustees and the work that you're doing because you're involved in some other pieces as trustees are important. As homeowners of that subdivision, it's an important element to be involved.
And I think that's the reason, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry when I did that. I don't, I think that that's the reason I was asking the question. I was asking probably about the bond and how that can be mitigated or if there can be an agreement between the parties that's related to those dollars. Because it may be, and I don't know the answer, the board separately has to make the decisions, that that may be some of the answers that the science has practiced. As opposed to having to resolve, start again, transfer back, start again, transfer forward, so forth as well. But that may also make a difference, for example, whether or not we have reserve funds for the retention funds, for example. Whether that's there right now. I don't remember how much we have in reserve. I don't know if Diane has that information or not. So maybe that that also has to be clinched.
Well, part of this question has come through whether it was initially funded, not necessarily, is it, is it funded now?
It depends on what I I find it.
Yeah.
I I haven't seen anything about funding of any accounts.
I don't think that any, that if I remember, I don't think it was funded, but I'm not positive.
Right, I'll send you all the documentation on that, per the spreadsheet we're working on.
Is there um anything new left to discuss or do you have, I think you need to go forward?
Yeah, I mean, these conditions are all conditions that I'm still waiting for information on, so.
Okay.
Condition eighty, I will provide the board with my opinion as to what the responsibility of the developer is, certainly for the next meeting. But I have, I'm looking for some of those informations too. I have not signed off on mine.
Okay, any more, uh, any, any more regarding this, um, do you guys, I know you get every answer, but is this at least enough information for you guys to be comfortable with us going forward?
Yeah, I think we appreciate the opportunity to express our concerns, so I think that's.
Um, yeah, so Carrie, I also, I'll let them know if they need anything from you. Is there a compliant link or file that contains everything regarding this? Or are they there of asking you to have these following documents and you give, giving them what they were, let them know what we have?
So what's provided in the meeting packet today? You go to my, the zoning board website. You go to tonight's, you know, agenda's in there. You go to tonight's agenda and right next to that link, it says packet. Just click on the packet.
So it's immediate of literally everything, everything from tonight, even stuff not about your case, but it's whatever we have, you you will have, you'll have there.
Everything is right there. And then actually, once this is downloaded, this will be uploaded as well, so you'll be able to leave the meeting as well.
All right, so any more questions to the boards? We can just move on with this one.
Mr. Chairman.
Nancy Goulat, chairman of stormwater committee. You were involved with the project, obviously it was forty B and it was before our time. But in listening to the discussion here tonight, I want to know what kind of basins we're talking about. I heard infiltration, detention and retention. If it's fenced, it's killing and it's holding water. What kind of a basin, basins, and I've heard two, what kind of basins are they?
So we can give you all the engineering data, infiltration basins.
They don't continually hold water.
Correct.
Okay, because that's what you said, and yet I've heard other terms. I've heard discussion about money to maintain or repair these. Once this project is finished, whether or not the roads get accepted. Option one, if the town accepts the roads, do we get the basins too? Who's going to maintain those basins if the town accepts the roads?
I have a way to save your wagons.
All right, so that will be separate from accepting roads.
That's correct.
The reason I ask this is because one of the things that Mrs. Easterday and I think Mrs. Caldonia? Or is it somebody in assessors office? One of the things that the EPA is requiring us to do, stormwater committee, is have a complete inventory of all the basins there are in this town, regardless of who's responsible for them. And I know that Mrs. Easterday and others have had to go back and look at old developments because we have the inventory and we're supposed to map them. So I'm just concerned that in going forward. There will be involvement of the stormwater committee because we're obligated to do this. But I also understand there won't be an obligation on the part of the town to maintain them, so that's we're good to know. Thank you.
So just to be clear, the only obligation related to stormwater that could potentially become public, so responsibility of the town is anything located within the roadways?
The town drainage system. And I would assume if the town accepts the road, the drainage system that's in it, the stonings, the MS four.
Yeah, that would all be part of the of the roadway acceptance.
It's responsible of the town. Okay. Right, and I understand that. My only concern were of those basins because of the research that has been done so far and it's intensive because it's it's old. The only thing we have to determine going back is who's responsible for the basins in that development that was done years ago. Again, to meet the requirements of what we have to have for the EPA, but I understand about the the MS four system, so thank you.
The language is very clear in the guidelines that if you would fit, the homeowners association is responsible going forward.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, my only final piece on this, I'm not clear if you're planning on filing a modification request on the sign tonight, if you wanted to do that.
I'll, I'll submit that tonight and wait for the twenty day.
So if you can just hand, handwrite on your, whatever you submit, that you're waving the right to having this heard for twenty, within the twenty day timeframe.
Yeah.
Then I think here you can take it and stamp it in as received, she can know it that it's received tonight, but she'll stamp it in tomorrow.
And that would mean someone's entitled to approve that, right?
No, that would be.
That, that, that is any for the, okay, okay. So once that's all set, I will need a motion that we continue this, the next, um, next meeting, which we just will wait until we have that a little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty day response? Oh, yeah, I just can't wait anymore, sorry.
Wait the twenty day, twenty day deadline to hear a modification. And request that it be heard at the next meeting.
So just a little clarification, but I have a lot of different questions. So two new items, one, which is closing the permit, which is the final fence, and then also a request for us to take care of the electric box in the park. As well as communal clarification on the park area. It seems there were a couple of different discussions that went on.
I remember when we did the writing of this out, the issue was pretty clear. You do not want to put any of the final seating due to vandalism until the end of the coming. So, and I remember that being stated, and I want to say there was six seats, but you're saying there's a lot more than that out there right now.
So so I'm, I'm definitely willing to go out and take a look. You know, at one point, some were damaged by kids, so they replaced, but newer versions of that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look at the, I'm gonna look at the permit language real quick.
And then you're about to try to.
And I mean, my goal here is obviously to meet. I mean, homeowners, was there a specific addition that you're looking for in there? Otherwise, I'll, I'll look at the permit language, but just so that way it speeds up the process. Is there a specific?
Do you like benches that aren't rusty already? You only put them in a year and a half ago, I think, and they're already rusty and falling apart. So they're dangerous.
Could we put a like, is that the request? I mean, it sounds like there was mention of tables.
Where are, building or facility tables? Yeah, the building inspector noted this as well, when the tables are not present, because I think it relates to your plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
It's really not, I think it was condition fifty two. And it relates to the plan. So you had a pass the recreation park plan that the zoning board approved. And so I think that from what I can tell from the building inspector's review, because my comment was he needed to look at that.
Yep.
He said tables are not present, so I think tables are one piece of it. Terms of the rustiness of the benches, I mean, I don't know what those, what shape those are.
And it was, they weren't present because they're, they weren't present because they're temporary, but they eventually will be permitted once the property's done. Is that what?
I just, I don't have Jim's, I just have Jim's email from this past Monday.
Okay. Okay.
It just mentions they're not present.
Well, I remember we had talked briefly about the type and we were talking about potentially the heavy rubber coated type. That have a seal rubber on them or something like that so that they don't rust and how they can be rounded to the ground so they couldn't be yanked out. I don't have the answer to that last part of it. But I will suggest with all three of us trustees here, it's very simple for any of us. I know I can't see it, but for any of us to meet you there at some point and just do a walkthrough of anything we need to to look at.
I guess with the interest of, you know, completing the project within the timeline, my goal here was to come up with a numerical deficiency. So there, there's not one necessarily listed on the permit that says reference to the plans. I'm willing to work that out with the building inspector. But I wasn't sure if there was something specific that the homeowners would want in case I need to pitch a modification for the next meeting, that when we come, it can be something that we pitch together. Is that something I should meet with them separately?
I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I I don't think, I think that makes a lot of sense. If there's something different that you want to do than look on the plans, I think a modification request is certainly something that's zoning board would consider.
All right, Carrie, you all set? You have what you need from him?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I want to need a motion, I'm going to continue this to the next president. Is there a motion on the floor? I'm going to ask one of the three board members, and obviously I can't, because I have the motion.
I says we put your name, motion to.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Any discussion? I'll favor. All right, all right, so we're going to this, um, the next meeting, you guys have to date it out, right? Awesome. Yeah, I got your cat, Carrie, I'm going to, you guys need.
Four more things, just out of the, if you may, let's do, you want to talk with that engineering board?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah, I will definitely do that, thank you.
Uh, just a point of Greg, just so you guys know, typically when a member of the board, whether they're a board member or not, have a conflict, typically they would literally get up. And sit in the audience, just for the point of clarification, obviously, you know, it it's very clearly stated beforehand. Just, just so you guys know, if you, if you ever see it happening, like sometimes they will really get up, sit in the audience. When I, when I address public input, then they address them, they say the name for everything for the record. But typically, no, they don't stand back here, whereas they have a lot of questions and regarding, you know, it's, as long as it's very clear that they are not trying to say one thing, you know. They, they can say, I would like the board to vote this, but when they say that, it no different than a resident saying it. It's not something we often see, it's a bit, it's with the forty, because where they go on for a very long time, you might have a rent that's, I remember you guys when they happen to be living in one of them. So that's, that's why that took place today. Or you might see it when my next neighbor is here. And so technically, if my next neighbor was here before us, I don't have to, excuse myself, because I'm not a tech, I don't, I don't own that property. But I would because it's, it's the appearance of conflict, it's, well, okay, you don't actually have a financial stake in that property, but you live there. So it's again, it's a very big thing as to the appearance. So back when my dad and I were both on the board, we would have to say, you know, we, due to the number of builders here, we might have to vote on the same. we would have to say, you know, we, due to the number of developers here, we might have to vote on the same case. If we don't have three board members already, you know, some of us can't, can't do it. We would have to make sure we state that for the record that if the, if applicant doesn't care, applicant doesn't care. If they do care, we have to find another way around that. Again, even if we don't think it's gonna matter, it's the inheritance of a common of interest. So if you, well, no, it's not, it doesn't matter if you think there was, if someone else thinks there is, that's not the issue is. So every year, we usually pick the common of interest laws, and that's one thing that is not the rule of law. Alright, so just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that. Uh, next thing we have is public hearing continued to the modification of comprehensive permits Stonegate Landing LLC. What's the sign of source at Avenue 138? Obviously, the applicant is not here before us, but there is somebody in the audience who has a lot of people on his set. We have her letter right here, but she's here. And I think I still need to read her letter, uh, but since she is here, if you're gonna think before she's not, we get.
Did everybody get a copy of the letter? Okay. Was, Mrs. Easterday, was the letter sent to Mr. Cusom and attorney and whoever else was, okay. It's pretty cut and dry. You know the answer. It's all taxes owed, and that's probably why they're not here tonight.
I think, yeah.
And as in a couple of weeks, we're gonna have August first rolling around, which we all know, we already got those bills in the mail. So the next thing that we have done, that is going to take a while, and this may not be ready for the next meeting, but Mrs. Checket, full-time assessor, has gone through and made a list of all of the lots. Obviously, the seven and eight that's referred to in the letter, those are the big chunks. Okay, but within those, we know that there are lots. And that brief description of just plans and deeds and how things change, you can see how confusing it is. So she's made a spreadsheet of the lots within the sections. So she's going to email that to the three assessors, and so that we can each look at it, and on our next meeting, which is approximately two weeks, we can send a question to her ahead of time, or we can ask the questions at the next assessors meeting. So we have also, we're gonna continue this until we get this thing figured out. But in the meantime, should the payments be made to pay off everything to whatever the latest bill is? The collector's office will notify Harry, and you will know that there has been a payment, if it's paid through May or August or whatever the time period is, which is the, which is the information you need to determine whether or not you're gonna go ahead. You notice those two large payments on there? You know, those are so old, they have gone to tax title. Which means the next step was we're gonna sell your property, we're gonna take it, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna sell it. Because Mrs. Mello explained to us, and as did Mr. Reynolds, the collector, how long it takes to actually go through the process? Because first, you're, you're, you know, you don't pay it on time, the whole interest gets put on there. And that continues for a period of time, and you keep getting reminders. By the time it gets to tax title, all of the fees have been added because it's been listed in the newspaper, and all of those costs are added to the liability for whoever owns the property. So when you see those giant ads in the paper, and it tells some of them a piddling amounts of money, but when you think about what it costs to put that ad in the paper, and everybody is gonna get charged a share of that.
Right.
And then, obviously, the town has special counsel that handles if in fact you're going to take the property. It's not handled by gay and gay. It's somebody that specializes in this kind of law practice. So when you see tax title, that was practically the last gong when those got paid. So we will have, in the future, we'll have more info for you, but to stay on top of your main question about are taxes paid? Mrs. Easterday will know it as soon as they're paid and get that information out to you. So you can determine if you're going to proceed with the hearing or whatever you're gonna do, but we'll continue to work on this. And the, there will be some changes submitted to the town's maps. And January is when I'll call it the big update is done.
Right.
And we picked up all the things that happened during the year, who changed what. Because if you've ever gone and looked at the maps, you may see a name crossed out because the property gets sold, and now there's a new name penciled in. But all of that stuff has to be put on the maps officially. And it may have been that the attorney went online and was looking at maps and was saying, wait a minute, you know, they're not up to date, which is something we had suspected, but anyhow.
You know, like I said, I don't care if it takes six months, and I don't care if it's a penny over. Whatever time you need and wherever it is, we're not hearing it until, until it's paid, and I don't care if they're gonna answer from us for six months, I mean. That's the cost to a good person.
In all honesty, it's confusing. What you've read there, if you notice, who paid, who wrote those checks? The person that wrote the checks is not the owner of the property. I'm not sure who was being represented, because for all intent purposes, the records in the town indicate who owns Stonegate Landing. It is not the purported buyers. It's Mr. Federoff.
It's funny you say that, Carrie. We just discussed that the other day when, right, you mentioned that there, you looked it up, they were not registered with the state, right? And Carrie said that you knows that they're under, under, under a different name?
So.
We talked about it written on the phone, but it was with Nancy bringing that up, I think it's, well, you know, we discussed that right now.
So, yes, I was, I've been double checking the secretary of state's office to make sure we can find the corporation as the applicant that we, or the letter from the mass housing that approved that they could apply is Abel Landing LLC.
That's, that's the name, that's the name we're talking about right now, correct?
So I've been looking on the secretary of state's office to see if they have a corporation which isn't filed. But then I went through and I found on the deed, when they were doing their due diligence, on the deed, it's listed as Abel Realty LLC. And then I went to the secretary of state's office, and they do have a corporation that's registered with the secretary of state as Abel Realty LLC.
And that's when they asked you, like, was that integration, they said, not a big deal, or is it a big deal?
Well, I can, I can add to that.
That's what I was just talking to Mark about as far as the ZBA perspective.
I, I can add to that. If you notice, where it talks about deeds, one of the deeds was to just register the name. You see that one there?
Yes.
So when the building commissioner told me he couldn't find or listed with the secretary of state, I went to Mrs. Easterday, and she told me she had looked everywhere. I kept asking the attorney. I kept saying, would you please send me a copy of the business certificate? I was told by one member of the board of assessors, stop following it, it's none of your business. I said, it's my business if I ask the question. I continued to say, where is the business certificate? The response I got from the person who wrote the checks is the reason it is not registered with the secretary of state because there's a potential fourth partner. Now, at the meeting you had, the first meeting that I came to, there were three gentlemen present with Mr. Cusom.
Correct.
The attorney wasn't present.
Correct.
The next Wednesday, the following Wednesday, when Mr. Cusom came to the assessors meeting, the attorney was with him. Mr. Federoff came, but the three men weren't there. We all assumed the three gentlemen, the three partners, or whatever.
Right.
But her last response to me was, and I, I told Mrs. Easterday, her explanation was, there's a potential fourth person entering into this, and until they know the status, they haven't gone to register it. I know this is a public meeting, so I won't go into it any further, but it, let me just say, it raises more questions.
Hi, Mrs. Easterday, you agree with that, right, Harvey?
Smell of the, smell of fish.
So from, from zoning board perspective, 40B permits need to be allowed by limited dividend organizations. And mass housing needs to provide confirmation that somebody is or is eligible to be. So an entity is or is eligible to be a limited dividend organization.
And I'm never.
What was produced was a letter saying that Abel Landing LLC is eligible to be a limited dividend organization. What has been found in the secretary of state's records, from what I'm understanding, is not, there is no record of Abel Landing LLC, which is fine. Doesn't have to exist right now, it will have to, this zoning board will need to make sure that it exists before you decide, before a building permit is issued, before, you know, before something happens, before. Potentially, it might be something you ask for before you close the public hearing. And you get that sort of confirmation that there is secretary of state paperwork showing that Abel Landing LLC has been formed, and that its purpose is consistent with regulatory provisions for it to be a limited dividend organization. But it doesn't necessarily have to be formed in order to make the application. And with an LLC, just from a general, and I'm not a corporate attorney, but generally, those are made up of various partners. And there's usually a manager who's identified for purposes of corporate filings. So who those partners are, this board, they could change those partners in and out without this board knowing.
Okay.
You need to identify who the manager is, so that there's a, that needs to be part of the corporate filing.
Okay.
It sound, it appears that that entity has not been yet filed officially with the secretary of state's office. For whatever reason, that's up to them. But you want to make sure that not only is it filed, but that you can look at its purpose, and its purpose aligns with the regulatory requirements for it to be a limited dividend organization.
Right.
And and so that's just something for the board to keep in mind at the time that you move forward with this public hearing.
So one thing that Carrie had talked about on the phone is that what do you feel is the best way to, no pun intended, continue this matter? Do we just keep? Do we just keep continuing it every single meeting? Do we suggest that they withdraw? I mean, I, I, but by that, I don't mean that whatever it is, the worst, the soft, that should keep happening. I'm more asking, do we keep this on the duty? Yeah, I mean, to keep it on, on the agenda, un- until they withdraw on their own, or or, or, when they, Carrie talked about, do we take a vote? And, and, and deny it, because that's what's before us. I just don't want to waste anyone's time any further. If, you know, if we hypothetically were to vote, no, deny it, then they, they're working soft, until they want to resubmit it, or if we keep continuing it, then they obviously have a need to keep looking, they should keep looking, if they want to, regardless. It's more like how long do we keep something agenda for, without always ever showing up here? I mean, if taxes don't get paid for two years, are we keeping, I'm exaggerating, but do we keep this on the agenda for two years? You know what I mean?
So before I answer that, Ms. Kular, can I just ask you a question to expand your letter? If I'm reading your letter correctly, there is approximately $1,257 and change over interest is accruing.
Yes, but it hasn't been writing of that letter yesterday.
Right.
That's February and May.
Yep.
That's, that's live. Now, again, the assessors office and the tax, we're looking back further, but our, our assignment per se is answer the question of the ZBA, which we all knew the night, the very first night they came in, we knew that that money was owed, but we wanted to have more definitive information. And the other thing I want to say is, I know that the name of Abel, whatever they are, has come up repeatedly. We've taken the position that we're only dealing with Stonegate Landing, because that is, that's who is the legal owner of all of the property, now that lots have been bought back and that whole thing. So those payments, I'm not sure what the status of Abel was at the time, but as far as we're concerned, those are payments against the liability for taxes that Stonegate had. They can figure out
Right.
what they were paying for, but the town recognizes only Stonegate at this point in time.
No, I mean, that makes sense, because the petition has, it's a modification request, the current current permit holder is Stonegate Landing LLC. So the petition has to be made by Stonegate Landing LLC, which it was. It is seeking to transfer certain phases, phase B, to a new entity.
Correct.
Abel Landing LLC. So that's why this board needs to be thinking about Abel Landing LLC when it's ready to move forward with a public hearing. The town right now absolutely should be looking at what is owed with regards to the land involved with this comprehensive permit, and you're hoping to confirm that it's all in the name, proper name, Stonegate Landing LLC. If you discover it's not, that's another issue this board is gonna have to address, obviously. But if somebody were to come to the town tomorrow with a check and that amount of money, would that be sufficient for the tax status application form to be signed off on by the treasurer so that this board were to move forward? We're not, that's what I'm trying to understand.
It would be as soon as that, well, it'll be a few more pennies because of the interest.
But whatever that final number is.
And the interest accumulates, it accumulates at 14%, that's a state law, so that's why it gets very expensive. If somebody comes in the door tomorrow with a check saying, I want to pay off the taxes owed for February and May, and they'll, they'll check it and say, as of right now, today, here's the number, and they write the check, Mrs. Easterday will be notified. However, by the time you meet in August, if August 1st is not paid, they're still, alright, so that's why we're gonna make sure.
I mean, that was true for any petition, right? So the tax status application forms what's submitted as part of the application package.
Correct.
So the question is, at some point in time, the treasurer always has to sign off on it, and then taxes started pooling going forward.
Right, right, so.
So that's what I'm trying to say.
Yes, if, if the amount with a few more pennies for the few days of interest, if that is paid, then for all intent and purpose, they are paid to date, and we would notify Mrs. Easterday, let the board know they have paid this amount, okay? And I would think, yes, they should be able to sign off at town hall, because, again, the assignment that we had was answer the question, do they owe taxes? If it's paid tomorrow, and you ask me that after it's paid, I'm gonna say, no, they don't owe taxes at this point.
Right.
Okay? If, obviously, if it goes beyond the 1st of August, we're just gonna add some more numbers.
So given that, given the amount that's approximately owed, and the fact that there have been payments in larger amounts in in the last six months, 10 months, my thought right now would be, and because I think you all took Mr. Cusom's email to be deemed as requesting another continuance.
The, before, uh, before last meeting, correct?
For this meeting, tonight's meeting.
Yeah, he has to, it be continued to tonight. That's the last part.
The question is, do you believe you have a request for continuance before you write now?
Yeah. I, 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 I'm, I'm, I mean, did we say, assume his lack of appearance, that we are gonna take it that way? Oh, I'm sorry, you said you had it, I'm, I'm sorry, you just, you had one, you know, I didn't see it, I was at work. You said, do we, you said you could take it somewhere?
No, he answered me a last minute email.
Yeah, that was one of like 4:15.
Yeah.
You must have pulled it here.
Did you ask him if he's coming tonight, Mrs. Easterday?
Um, so. Uh, this is from Greg, um, not from Greg, um. Uh, Greg, I think, I think you have some ones from, uh, that was, you have on screen there regarding the last case. That's my.
Yeah, I took it.
Cause you, I, I can't, I, I got divorced, so you guys start before I did.
While you're looking for that, I have a question. As you read through that, you noticed that in reference, there were six lots that got changed in size to four lots. When somebody does that, do they come back to you, or do they go to planning?
This should have all been gone, this should have all happened through the zoning board.
Okay.
And I think the fact that it didn't, brought to this board's attention, and they were planning to address it with the developer, and ultimately the developer agreed to revert to what it used to be. And it's why you're seeing confusion in the D.
Okay.
This is, um, uh, and you, you know, but Carrie sent to Paul and said, I would like to advise you that at the last meeting, it was mentioned that under no circumstances will the board hear the matter until the tax issue is resolved, and that moving forward, the following options are available. One, allow continuance. Two, allow the applicant a withdrawal without prejudice, at which time, the applicant may resolve tax issue and reapply. Two, allow the applicant a withdrawal without prejudice, at which time, the applicant may resolve tax issue and reapply. Or three, deny the application due to unpaid taxes. If the applicant elects to withdraw the prejudice, your prejudice is not required. If not, I would suggest that you and the applicant appear before the board tonight. And then Paul responded.
No, he didn't respond.
Yeah.
Prior, e- the email prior to that was him emailing me saying, Carrie, I assume the ZBA meeting will be continued until the matter is resolved. And then that was my response.
Oh, I I I didn't respond, I'm sorry, I was.
Yeah.
I I took it, I took it, that's the way.
I took it, I took, I took it.
Wrong.
Yeah.
So, so to answer Marguerite, we have, they did not formally, or in my opinion, inform, informally suggest or hint or anything asking us to continue. The, uh, until.
Until, I had no response.
Until, not until before, or until tonight, obviously. I'm talking more updated correspondence, they they did not, they did not say, no, I'm not gonna go tonight, please take my absence as my saying, my request to continue. So I mean, uh, we we had, we had the on the agenda to continue this, tonight, to hear updated tax information, which we haven't updated in the sense that the answer is what we assumed all along and is still the same, no, packets are not paid. I I mean, we, we can obviously, as a board, made the motion to continue. We cannot make the motion for them to withdraw, obviously. If that's what we wanted to do, they should have said that. So our options are, I guess, if, clearly if I'm wrong, Marguerite, is to continue or deny, correct?
Right, and if you were to deny it, I would suggest you deny it without prejudice due to the fact that there's unpaid taxes. Whether or not they are subject to the two-year prohibition for reviling, I'm not positive that they are. Um, but I haven't actually taken a look at that, and that's something we could explore.
Is one option, in your opinion, better than another, or not necessarily?
I mean, the only reason I might be inclined to suggest that the board, if the board feels that they want to act without a request before it to continue it for one more meeting, it's strictly because there's a, not a significantly large amount of taxes owed, and it is possible, I'm not saying it will happen, but it is possible now that there's a number identified, that prior to the next meeting, they will have paid that number in a sufficient time, which would be before August first, to pay off the tax obligation and get, for you to have a complete application. However, that's really up to you. I mean, had that not been the case, had we been still waiting, or then had there been a large amount that was well beyond what they paid in the past, I would probably suggest that you just, you don't have a request for it.
Yeah, and and I I know in 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 Nancy's eyes, she she feels like it's, you know, not not everything in this, a lot of time in between. I I feel like current report have been exceptional when it comes to getting this information at the short time that they did.
Absolutely.
So i- if I was like, you know what, you know, we're getting the, not money round, but if it was a situation where it's like, they're not giving us anything, I am not sure. I mean, the fact that they're able to get us this specific information this quickly, I I think it is 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 definitely something that we need to consider. I mean, that's a lot of work that was done to give us literally to the penny amounts, so.
Right, but you were to, now that they've received it today, give them, you would give them a few weeks to act on it, and you would know by your next meeting.
Right, so this is when the meetings are, uh, meant to post it. You you you're saying, right, they might see that and say, oh, we have a dollar amount, let's get that paid tomorrow. But that is obviously a potential possibility.
Absolutely, I mean, I I assume that's something the town would wanna have happen, because you're looking to have your outstanding.
Everyone wants to pay taxes, we.
You're not gonna say, no, we don't need your tax money, it's a.
No, if you don't continue it, then maybe less inclined or encouraged to get this paid.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, sure, as a, as a, a member, my personal interpretation, um, was that when I saw the uh, letter from Ms. Goulard, as well as, um, Mr. Cousins, that if you think about it, we started with a figure of forty-three thousand dollars, we're down to roughly thirteen hundred dollars, question still outstanding or not.
Yeah.
Um, but my, my impression was that both parties were saying, we're still working this through, there's still a little bit to resolve here. And in essence, although Mr. Cousins didn't physically respond back, I interpreted Ms. Goulard's letter as well to say that a continuance might be acceptable, she can't tell us what to do, uh, because we're still trying to put all of this together, there's a few little pieces to the puzzle.
Okay, if, if I may?
Yeah, please.
No.
Okay.
No, I I don't, I don't wanna mislead you.
That's why I'm asking, yeah, I was telling you, that was my.
When I said that the spreadsheet has been done, or is in the, just about finished, 'cause Mrs. uh, checked and will send it to the three assessors. At today's assessors' meeting, the question was, okay, here's the draft letter that's going to go to ZBA, let's go over this one more time. We know the answer is yes, but I gotta give them a number, and I gotta give them some detail. Obviously, I'm not gonna give them all the details, 'cause it's gonna be pages, nobody wants to read pages of that confusion. So I said, what what we need is, when I went to the meeting the the first time to the ZBA, you gave me a number of forty-three thousand dollars. I need to know, where did you get that number? Because we're gonna answer the question with the letter, so they know, the board knows how to act. I can't tell you right now where that forty-three came from, okay? I said, I think what we can do is take that number and reduce it by the payments that we've verified, and those payments are based on the fronts and backs of checks that the person who wrote them sent to us.
That's right.
Um, so, no, I, all I'm saying is, we are doing more research as time allows. Um, I I'm no, certainly not trying to influence the decision you make. I heard what, uh, Attorney Mitchell said, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Attorney Mitchell.
Okay.
So, so we know, we've talked about the tax thing, and we know how much money is, uh, as of right now is owed. Is there a problem for the ZBA, because they don't know who they're dealing with? The other party, the town is saying, we're dealing with Stonegate.
Right, right.
'Cause we, once we saw that, once I get the answer, if I haven't forwarded that to Mrs. Easterday, that email, I will, that explained about whatever.
That long, yeah.
Um, we just stepped back and say, we're only dealing with Stonegate. But you have before you another entity that that is, um,
Okay.
is there, and I don't know, I I don't know how that enters into your decision, but certainly not, um, I'm not saying to you one way or another, continue, deny.
No, I'm not suggesting.
Whatever, so I just want you to know, we are going to follow up as time allows, uh, on the rest of that, just so we all know the answer to it, okay? So, uh, enjoy decision, ladies and gentlemen.
Now, for clarification, I wasn't suggesting you were.
Yeah.
I was just suggesting that it sounds like there's still a little bit of clarification needed.
Done. Uh, as far as the satisfaction of the Board of Assessors and the Collector's Office, yes.
Yeah, and that's all I was getting at, yes, that's just.
Yes, yes. Which we will obviously share with you.
So, there's no harm in keeping it open. I, and and it's not like, you know, it's adding a lot of extra work on, you know, for, for no result. It's just a matter of, doesn't need to be able to kind of say, doesn't it need to, it doesn't need to be open, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if there was, if there was, um, members of the public who are attending every meeting,
That's, right.
which is not happening face in person, then that would be a different.
I know I'm wrapping this up, I mean.
That would be a different situation. I think that generally, what ended up happening here is, you didn't realize you had an incomplete packet until the night of the meeting. And that was a little frustrating, and so you agreed more than, typically, you would have just said, we're not gonna hear this matter, not even put it on the agenda. You went beyond your usual practice in putting it on the agenda, and now it's kind of continuing. So I think at some point in time, you need to say, it's got to be resolved. It sounds like at least with this letter today, there is a way that this could be resolved within a one-meeting timeframe. If it's not resolved at that time, then, you know, I think making a, I mean, providing one more meeting time to get this resolved may make sense, possibly, because you've started down that path. But it is not, I mean, this board's general practice is that without that tax status application form filed, it is not going to be even put on the agenda. And there was just a series of events where it was promised and it would come in, and I, again, probably fully expecting that it was just a check the box type of thing, and not really realizing it was a problem.
That's, and and that's why she had said, you know, he asked Carrie, you know, can I get an answer that the board's gonna continue? I said, yeah, we're gonna continue the case, we're not gonna, I can't tell you, yeah, we're gonna let you, you know, we were very clearly, we're gonna present anything until the fact that we're done. So if anything's being discussed tonight, it's the taxes. It's not your case, and you're, I'm not gonna say, yeah, put your easel up and let's see what you got. It's gonna be, are the taxes paid? No? Then we're we're done for this for now. If it was, oh, yeah, the taxes are paid, here's the proof, here's a letter from the assessors, I would say, go ahead and present. He wanted that answer from me through Carrie over email, and I was like, not, not happening at at all.
Yeah, I think that that was made clear, that you're only talking about the taxes. Uh, I think you've already explained to them, you're, you're moving forward atypically here, even willing to continue it just for purposes of talking about the taxes. But at the same time, it's out of respect to the assessors' department and the fact that there's confusion here and, um, that you're looking for that information, which has been able to be provided, and it would not be inappropriate. If you're comfortable doing it without a request, an official request before you, besides what Mr. Cousin already sent. If you consider that to be a request, or if you don't consider it to be a request, and you're comfortable proceeding without a request, providing one more meeting period of time in light of the information presented tonight would not be unreasonable.
You put this right, I would say, the last thing I wanted to do is say, guys, let's just, maybe folks to deny this, and finally, the board says, wait. Great, thanks, guys, you know, and so out of the work that they did, if there was no harm in A, continuing it, B, would it be legal for us to just keep it open? That's what I wanted to make sure those costs weren't being checked off too, so, um.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, oh, yeah.
To second reason.
Go ahead, I didn't, it's good.
Um, when, um, Mr. Custom and the attorney and Mr. Fedorov came to that Board of Assessors meeting,
Yeah.
which was after, uh, the meeting when I came here.
Right.
Um, we explained to, I explained to him, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna audit Stonegate.
Yeah.
And this is, these are the steps we're gonna take.
Yeah.
And, um, another member of the board said, I agree, that's what, that's the format we're gonna do. Um, and I think the word audit concerned him, but I says, this is just a procedural thing, these are steps.
Right.
Okay? He said to me, now that you've agreed to do this, and you're gonna look at the taxes, he said to me, he asked me at the meeting, would you go to the board, the ZBA, and ask them that since you're gonna be looking into it, that ask them to continue this, meaning to hear our case? And I said, no, what? No, he asked me to come and it basically said, you, this is what we're going to do. And he says, would you go to the ZBA and ask them, tell them then what you're gonna do? In other words, so they could move on, and I said, no. I mean, that's, that's not our decision, we were asked a question, we're gonna answer the question, but we're not gonna come in and say, oh, you should do this, that, or the other. My other thought is, I've had to appear a number of times before the Tonconcom on a very large development plan for this town, because there was a drainage basin that's supposed to be in Ton. And because every time I go, and the proposal was before the Tonconcom, they keep asking for continuances.
Yeah.
Because I get up and say, this has not come before the town of Dayton, this development is in the town of Dayton. I'm not sure we will allow a basin from this development to cross into the city and actually be in your community. So I don't know how you can act on this, because it hasn't come to us. And it's really, if you will, our project, meaning located here. So what the chairman of the Toncom did, and I don't know if this is a possibility, he explained to the attorney who was representing, uh, the developer, you keep coming back, we keep putting you on the agenda, and you keep coming back for continuances. We have a very long agenda, and every time we put you in, and you come back and say, uh, we're not ready, or whatever.
Right.
What he said to, what the chairman of the Toncom said to the attorney, uh, let's continue, I think it was, I think it was May, I think it was the last time I went there. Uh, let's continue this till August, and in the meantime, get this straightened out in Dayton before you come back to us. Because if you get it straightened out in Dayton, we'll, in other words, they'll know what the answer is for their side of the, the thing. I don't know if there's any way that in your positions, this could be a notification to the individual, um, respond to us one way or another. It's, we've got to know, and so that you're not left hanging in perpetuity.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's nothing saying, unless we have a, a statement, there's nothing saying we have to continue something to that next meeting. If we wanna say, well, I'm in the community of assembly, we can, we can back and be able to vote on the floor, so.
My concern is a couple things, you know, I've listened to everybody talk about this. We've been putting time into the council, into this matter and all this stuff, that's costing the town money for somebody that hasn't paid their taxes on this property. I don't even think we should be hearing it, that's my opinion. Um, I know, I know Nancy's put time into it, I know Paul Cousins, but time into it, she made a perfect example. Come on, after this taxes are paid, by the time they come up to the next meeting, the next quarter, they're gonna be able to, they're gonna be able to back and swing it. So, uh, I'm not gonna make a motion, what I feel, but, um, I'm not, I don't even think we should be putting any time into Paul Cousins', uh, Stonegate Landing until the taxes are paid.
I will say that Board of Assessors meeting today, we, all three of us were there, Mr. Easterday called in. And when I gave the update on where we were and the letter and all that, um, Mr. Oars, who's the newest member, his position was, I think we ought to tell him, this is it, this is what you owe. We're done. If you think, you know, that something, give us more evidence. Um, I said, well, the only problem is, I think we need to resolve the issue, because we've already had some where it started, this list I told you about. And 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 the, there are three people in the Board of Assessors' office, three full-time employees. There are two in the tax collector's office, so collectively, that's who's been looking at it. I'm not spending full time, I look at it when they put it all together. But yes, I'm involved, as is, and and so is the town administrator, he's in the loop, 'cause to ask to know what's going on. Um, but the, uh, we didn't take a vote to just say, tell them, forget it.
Right.
We 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 said, look, send us the list, we'll take a look at that, okay? But I can tell you from the Board of Assessors' standpoint, the, this is costing the town money, uh, we'll do what we have to do, but kind of going along with what you said, Mr. Logan, uh, yeah?
I mean, I'm not trying to, I I don't see the problem with just continuing, but to continue talking about this gentleman's case is wasting time.
Yeah, and 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 we have a dollar amount now.
We have a number, pay it, we don't pay it, we deny it next week.
So I would say, if he asks for, I mean, on his own, doesn't go back and read, doesn't intend to watch it, if he sees any information from you, I would, I'm gonna explain that the dollar amount that's beforehand will, will keep it open, so if he's raised, if that is resolved between now and that, the August meeting, great, but if.
So Nancy, you were to go that amount, total amount, when did you find that amount, out to one thousand and change, when was that?
In the letter today.
Oh, the letter today.
Oh, okay.
Uh.
Yeah.
I thought it was over a couple weeks ago.
No, no, today, and that's the only one that I was suggesting.
No, no. No.
No, I agree, I agree.
One, one month, I, you have the right, correct, you do have the right to continue for more than a month.
That's today.
But given this, I also agree, it needs to be, now that there's a number.
There is now.
And there's a chance to pay it before August first, when the number changes dramatically.
Hmm.
And that would get you the tax status application form completed, so you can proceed, then I would say, give them that one opportunity, but.
I thought he had this a couple weeks ago.
No, no.
No, 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 no.
Right.
So Carrie, I mean, I would say, I, do whatever way you want, so word of this is that if they don't respond, we're not gonna do this again, it's like, I mean, respond, does that mean we're gonna continue? If we don't have response, we'll, we'll, we'll take a vote that means. And 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 as soon as they didn't get any information too, so if we're sitting at the same as I was bought of next month, with, hey, they have that amount, if anything has gone up, we haven't heard anything, then we're taking a vote, and whatever the vote is, whatever the vote is, unless they wanna reapply down the road.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
To continue, yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we continue the Stonegate matter for one meeting only until our meeting of August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two. And then the interim period, the, uh. And then the interim period, the, uh, chair through our.
No, John, John, interim, I mean, I, I don't, I don't wanna.
Just put a letter, the.
I don't wanna put the stipulation for one meeting only, because when if they come before us with the dollar amount, I, we, the motion would.
So I was gonna say, one meeting only with a stipulation that the payment that's currently outstanding as of today's date be paid to the town of Dayton prior to August first, two thousand twenty-two.
I don't think we necessarily need that, I mean, because we, we, I mean, if, if you, Carrie, if you wanna send them the information, uh, or if you, but, I, I just don't wanna put any unnecessary stipulations on it, I mean, if we, if, if that meeting comes and we wanna vote one way or another, it, it's almost like, by putting that situation in the motion, it's suggesting that we are going to vote one way or another. I don't wanna put that in a motion, I, I don't think that's right, Carrie, I mean. I, 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 right, I mean, I just, I just wanna be clear, I guess I was trying to be clear that we're not gonna go any further.
Well, is that, that's totally in the hands now.
Well. Yeah, so my suggestion is just a motion to continue at this stage.
Right, I. So, 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 yeah, I'm, it, that reduces it more, and now, if, I don't wanna bind ourselves to anything that we.
And because the amount is actually flexible and fluid, so it's not exactly the amount that's in the letter, they will need to call like an, an actual day job payment amount.
Yeah. Right. Right. So then I will withdraw and just revise the motion.
Okay.
That we continue one meeting only until, until August twenty-fourth.
Is there a second?
Right, you do want to have it saved for one meeting, not.
Not, just motion.
I just don't wanna keep, I'm hearing everybody says, by keeping that there forever, that's all, that's fine.
Right, so is it a motion to continue to August twenty-fourth, that's it?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Chairman, we're moving on a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just the three of you, so Greg and Jonathan.
Correct. Public input, Carrie, is there anything, oh, I, probably should, yeah, well, public input, anyone before us, I wish to.
All of us.
Nancy, you already spoke, so there you go, you're a little blocked out there. Uh, and correspondent Carrie regarding anything new?
Um, I just have one notification of a site review that was received from the planning board, if you guys want to address. The board, you have noticed, forget me. Um, the planning board received a notice for a site review for ten fifty William Street, which is Reed Farm.
Oh.
Um, they're doing a open, so it will, forgive me, E and L training, so they are doing some minimal renovations.
So, I, I, I think.
They're doing, um, minimal renovations on the interior, no renovations on the exterior for a fitness and training studio, so, um, with ten parking spaces.
And that's gonna be coming before, before some of the next meeting?
So that's going before the planning board, my counter, pardon me, forgive me, it's, um, next week, I believe, next week.
Okay.
So next Wednesday at six P M during the regular social meeting.
And, or, would you, would you add?
Yeah, I'll step up on that one.
So just, just.
Well, that's for the planning board, I'm sorry.
Not for the other company.
If you're from the fourth, I'll go back there.
No, it, it's, it won't be required to come before the zoning board, um, because it, there's a makes use over line.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So they can, they can, um, they're covered under that.
All areas.
Um, so it's just a site man to make sure that they can have a parking and um, the inside of the, the interior of the.
Just so you know, it's ready.
Planning board, um, and.
Right, Margaret, Gavin. Any of the members have anything? Nope, good, I'll quiet down, I guess. I'll be quiet.
Yeah.
Alright, so before we go on, you turn, as there, uh, there are motions on the floor to approve the meeting minutes from June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a motion, we accept the minutes of June twenty-two.
Is there, uh, a second?
A second, it's not, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor? Yeah, I'm hoping to adjourn.
Jim, I will, I'll make a motion to, Jim.
Is there a second?
A second.
Oh, I thought it was just gonna be John, okay. I was right, I thought he was gonna bob up.
Did the same word.
Alright.
I know when to give a nush up.
Any discussion? All in favor? Hey, we're all set.
You're all. I'm gonna get it.
Nice.
You wanna save that part, you want?
I do.
I'm gonna give it a pen.
You get it in a sec, okay.
I know, I didn't have the pen, I forgot, oh, it's right up.
I gave you the pen, it's all listed, hold on, and, uh.
I said, I saw, I saw the, there's a place not to get over there.
I really did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 I.
I was, I was, I was not bailing, their, their preparation was outstanding.
Opera.